Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Van Fleet. Thank you for coming to the Candidate Night Forum with the school board candidates, and followed up by a discussion of the Rethinking Runlet series, which will commence at 8:00. The first portion of the evening will be the candidate forum, which will run from 6:30 PM to 8:00, followed by the discussion on the series that the Concord Monitor has been running all week. Before we get started, I wanted to give a few thanks to the candidates for coming out tonight, for all of you for spending your time to be engaged in the community affairs, the school district for providing this space, the students who are helping us with our sound and technology, and Concord TV, who is recording this, which will be shown after. Tomorrow should be posted at Your Concord TV, ConcordMonitor.com, and replayed on Channel 22 of your Comcast channel for You Concord cable subscribers. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the three reporters that are going to be running the first portion of the meeting. We have Jeremy Margolis, who covers education for the Concord Monitor. We have Michaela Tofiggi, who covers a beat that we call Two New Hampshire's, which is poverty, equity, and disparity. And we have Catherine McLaughlin, who covers the city of Concord, which includes city council, school board, and criminal justice, and a great many other things. They wear many hats. And also tonight, there are panelists, or there are our forum, so please join me and let's get started. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Like John said, thank you for joining us tonight, and welcome to the Concord Monitor's 2024 School Board Candidate Forum. As John mentioned, I'm Michaela. I have Jeremy and Catherine beside me. There are six candidates in this race, and the top three vote-getters in an open contest will get seats on the school board in the November election.
Over the next 90 minutes, we're going to ask the slate of candidates questions about the district's middle school project, the district's most pressing issues broadly, and about charter amendments on the ballot this year.
For all questions, each candidate will get one minute to respond. Our timer, John, in the front row, will hold up a yellow card when you have 10 seconds remaining, and a pink card when you're out of time. Can everyone see him okay? He will get closer so that you can see him. There are six of you, and a lot to cover, so please be mindful of the time. We'll go down the line this way with the response to each question, but we'll start with a different person each time. Members of the audience had an opportunity to write down questions on their mind on the way in. However, if you think of one during the forum, you're able to come down to the front and see our friend Rachel, who has a box, and she will make sure your question is added. Alternatively, if you raise your hand, we have someone in the back who will come to you. And let's go ahead and get started.
We're going to start with a question about the charter amendments. Beside all your names on the ballot will be two proposed changes to the district charter. The first would require the district to get voter approval of all school relocations. The second would require voters' approval of any sales of property of more than one acre. Clint, we're going to start with you. Will you support either or both of the charter amendments? It's a yes or no question, and why? You have one minute.
Excuse me. For those of us who can't see the names, the people just introduce themselves so we know it's true.
Yep. Absolutely. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Clint Coxwell, and I'm running for school board candidate. And on the two amendments, I will be voting no, just because I don't think that this is a good way or a good source of taking control out of the hands of the school board. I'm not sure what the land one is all about, but I will say that if the amendment passes with 60% of people wanting to keep Runlet at the current site, I think that's definitely something that I would honor.
My name is Barbara Higgins, and while I don't necessarily agree with the specifics of the amendments, I completely understand and support the spirit behind the group that brought them forth, and so I'll support the amendments for that reason. I think there needs to be a board member that's willing to maybe put my own personal opinions aside and support the wishes of a lot of people in our community.
Hi, all. I'm Sarah Sadowski, and thank you, Jeremy, for the question. I am not taking a public stance on the ballot initiatives, and here's why. I think that this should be decided by the voters of our community, and I'm not comfortable putting my finger on the scale of public opinion. I signed the petition to put forward the charter amendments because I think that voters should have a mechanism for making their voice heard.
Hi, I'm Joe Scroggins. Yes, I do support the charter amendments. I have since day one. I think what's important to remember is that the charter amendments don't remove all autonomy of the board. It leaves quite a bit in place for the board to make good educational decisions and to make budget decisions, but I do think big decisions that impact the community for multiple generations need to have the community's input and the full community's buy-in, and these two amendments do ensure we have that both now and in the future.
Hi, I'm Pamela Walsh. I will vote no on both amendments because they will raise costs for taxpayers and delay a new middle school, and the second amendment will tie the district's hands in managing its property, which will increase costs in the future if we have to maintain property we don't need.
Hi, my name's Andrew Winters. I'm going to vote yes on the amendments. I support them. I don't think they're perfect, but no legislation really is perfect. I don't think that's the standard. Between yes or no, it's got to be yes. I think respectfully, the board erred when it picked its site location. There's obviously been a very large backlash in the community. Number one clearly addresses that, and it's tailored to going back and reforming the board's decision, which I think is appropriate. As far as number two, keep in mind that there's critics of some of the board's prior land sales with the Walker School, the Rumford School. There's also been critics of the city with the employment security sale, that perhaps the city did not maximize its value. I'm not making that assertion, but certainly there are people in the community who have, and that's why I think they want to have some control over the land. And I don't think land has to be sold in a hurry typically. You could get the voters' consent in advance to sell land if you need to sell it, but the land is in public trust when it's held by any government body such as the school board, so I think it's appropriate that the voters should have control over that. Thank you.
A quick follow-up. For those of you who answered yes, would you report restrictions on the school board's autonomy beyond what's included in the charter amendments? We'll start this time with Mr. Winters and circle back around to Ms. Higgins.
Yeah, 100%. I mean, the school board, first of all, autonomy here is a euphemism, okay? The school board has unchecked tax and spend authority. When people think autonomy, they think, oh, you know, that's a good thing. I mean, that's a good word, autonomy. But it's not necessarily a great thing if one single government body, even the wisest, greatest people in the world can make errors, which is why we have checks and balances. So there needs to be some kind of checks and balances on the school board's tax and spend authority.
So, while I do support these two current amendments, I do think there's something also very un-American about a very small amount of people that hold such large control over such communities' tax base. And then the people are relying on that small group of people that they have the best interests of taxpayers in mind. And as we have seen at times, we have a lot of great decision-makers on the board who care for the community, but at times that we maybe haven't. And so I do think that there's an opportunity to explore more connective tissue between the different bodies that govern us. In Concord, you have the school board, you have the city, and then you really have the state kind of sitting on top of that. And without that connective tissue that binds those two together, we really have multiple decisions going a lot of different ways, and that's kind of some of the challenges we have with the tax base currently, where the city's making cities independently of the school board, and then the state's kind of forcing multiple decisions. So I would support some level of reduced autonomy so that we can kind of tie those decision-makers together.
I would like to take a moment to say that even though I'm focused on building consensus around the middle school project moving forward post-election, I would stand absolutely firm on some of the encroachments on school budget autonomy that we are seeing at the state legislature, particularly around the Senate bill that was just signed by the governor that has a formula for school admissions enrollment caps, right? I want to make sure that I am clear that I do think that there is a lane here to promote autonomy, but also fiscal accountability to our voters.
So I'm the only yaysayer that has any school board experience. I'm finishing my 12th year, so I know how seamless and easy and wonderful it is to be able to sit in a room with eight other people and make ginormous decisions. I also know that with that privilege comes a lot of responsibility and really commands the board members to put their own personal opinions aside more often than not. I'm quite uncomfortable when a small number of people can make a decision for a ginormous number of people. So do I like the autonomy? Of course I do. It's made so many of our decisions seamless, but we're the only autonomous school board. We have high taxes in our community, and if you get in your car and drive around, other school districts aren't going to school in tents, or not having athletic fields, or missing auditoriums, or all of the things that we're struggling with. They have beautiful buildings. It doesn't take autonomy to run a district well.
Autonomy, after being on the school board for 10 years, gave us a lot of discretion, and so we could quickly make decisions about building three schools or working to, when the Concord steam closed down, we had to come up with a quick system for heating the high school, or we were going to be without a high school for one whole year. I would like to hear what the opinion of the rest of the candidates are on the city's autonomy, and I don't hear much about that. We've got nine members on the school board. A third are elected every year. To me, that's very good accountability, but anyway, the city council has autonomy.
Clint, actually, the school board has elections every year, which the city council does not. We have the same level of autonomy without the partisanship that we've seen in some places where the city council is controlling schools. We would also have the complication of the fact that we have two school districts in Concord. I think it's also important to look at the record, and the school district has been a good steward of funds, and our autonomy lets us do that. We've averaged a 1.21% combined tax increase over the last 10 years. I know for people whose homes values are going up, that doesn't always feel like that, but we work hard to manage the budget, and the fact that we're autonomous helps us do that. It also lets us attract good teachers and not put contracts up and down for votes like you see in some districts.
Next is a yes or no question, so we'll be brief. The amendments were written to apply to the middle school project, but the school district has disputed that. Do you believe that the charter amendments, if they pass, would apply to the Runlet Middle School project? We'll start with Ms. Sadowski.
Yes. Legally, I'm not sure, but I would honor if it passed with 60%.
I'm a bit more inclined to have Pam's answer. I'm wishy-washy on solid knowledge, but I would be the same way. I think it would affect the middle school.
A slightly different question here. The charter amendments need 60% approval to pass. What do you think the board should do about the future of the middle school if they fail but still receive a majority of support? And we'll start with Andrew at the end.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch the end of that question. Can you just repeat that last part?
Sure, yeah. I'll repeat the full question. The charter amendments need 60% of the vote to pass. What do you think the board should do about the future of the middle school project if they fail but still receive a majority of vote? So over 50%, but below 60%.
Right. Well, that's the easy one for me. Well, first of all, I saw your article where you guys said that it needs 60%, and maybe it does, but it's kind of a complicated legal issue, so I'm not so convinced about that. I think that would have to be decided by the courts. Hopefully, it won't be, but if someone was going to decide that, I think it would have to be the courts. I think likely, from what we've heard today and just common sense is, the board would respect a majority vote in principle, even if they didn't agree that it was legally binding. But I've said from the beginning, I think that the decision was in error and should be rescinded regardless of the vote, to be honest, because, you know, the charter amendments have been tied to the middle school decision, and obviously, most people who are going to vote yes are the, quote, "rebuild it, run it" people, and most people who vote no might not be, but they're not technically the exact same thing. A lot of people might vote no, but still want the middle school relocated. I've been pretty clear, I want the middle school relocated, you know, regardless. That's my position, so if I'm elected, I would assume that people voted for me, you know, in part at least for that reason.
Clint?
I think if over 50% of the people vote that they want Runlet at Runlet, that's a pretty sound endorsement.
So we're asking about the charter amendments?
I know. That's what I meant. The charter amendment, if more than 50% vote to keep Runlet at Runlet, that's, in my mind, a consensus, and it should be honored.
Yeah, I would concur that even if we didn't have the 60%, that we look at the spirit in which those amendments were presented and continue the conversation. We cannot continue to be a school board that says we listen, and then we do what it looks like we want. So if there's a majority vote on those amendments, then the next, the elected board needs to sit and communicate and open up conversation and rethink the whole thing.
A majority vote on the charter amendments would indicate fractured public trust in this decision to me. The middle school is not the only issue, but it is extremely important and on the minds of voters in this community. I am team revisit all the way anyway, because I think this has been a flawed public process. Civic engagement matters. Public trust matters, and so a majority of vote would indicate having to revisit the issue.
Yeah, absolutely. If there's a majority vote, we'd have to revisit, frankly, on any topic. I think anytime you give the community opportunity to speak, it's our job to listen. My job, if I'm elected to the board, isn't really to make decisions, it's to ask tough questions that help people get the answers that they want, and then they'll listen to the wheel of the community. When you walk around town, there's "rebuild Runlet" signs all over the community, but there's a lot in the community that wants the school at Runlet, who are going to lose it, and there's even more up at the east end where the school's going to be relocated. And so, you know, yeah, absolutely. I think even right now, without a vote, it has to be reconsidered. The people are going to lose the building, they want it, and the people that are going to have the new building, they don't want it. 20 to 1 spoke at the last common session and said, "We don't want to build at broken ground," and there was one that spoke against that, and the board still went ahead with that decision. Really, that's why the amendments are even on the ballot, is because of that kind of eroded trust. So I think it's important, we have to listen to people. Yes, majority votes in favor, even if it's not at 60%, we have to listen to that.
You know, I can't tell you, you know, without seeing the vote, I would say that when I talk to people, I hear two major concerns, the cost and certainly the location, but a lot of people talk to me about the cost and the delay, and we know now that delay and switching back to Runlet would cost about another $16 million, and it would delay the project another year and a half to two years. So I would have to weigh that and look at what the cost would be, what it might mean for building aid, and evaluate all of those things, because I do think when I hear from people, a lot of people tell me that, "Well, I just think it's cost too much, so that's why I'm going to vote for the charter amendment, or why I'm considering it." And the charter amendment actually leads to a more expensive project.
Now, we're going to move on to broader questions about pressing issues facing the district. We'll start by talking about the budget. All of you said that it's a priority for you to provide a quality education at a reasonable cost to taxpayers, but you have skyrocketing increases in special education and transportation, some of which is out of your control. Is an increase in taxes a likely reality for Concord homeowners in coming years, or are there areas of the budget that can be cut to off-send these increases? And Pam, we'll start with you.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that we are looking at is whether we can join with other communities around some of the student services and special education costs, around transportation in particular, but we are also legally required to provide special education services to students who are in charter schools, and that's pretty costly, and we have to hire people or send staff there. So certainly looking at those things. Every year, we look at the budget, we look at class sizes and enrollment, and rebalance how many teachers we have in each school, teaching each grade, to stay within our class-size policy and to keep the budget as tight as possible. And I think we also have to continue to advocate for the state to do what it's supposed to do and fund inadequate education. Those 27 students in charter schools, we paid $300,000 for, and I don't begrudge them that money, but the state gives us about $2,000 per child for those services.
It seems in the short run, because most of the budget is largely locked in, that there's nothing likely dramatic that can realistically be done in the short run. I think in the longer run, what we need to look at is some major demographic shifts that are going on. There's been a major decline in enrollment, and frankly, from some of the documents I've seen on the school board, I'm sorry, the school district, for example, in the budget, they have a demographic report that looks really obsolete, is still projecting many more students than the school has. So you've got declining students, the population of the city is scheduled to peak in about 20 years, it's the second-oldest state in the country, so you're going to have serious challenges ahead because you're going to have fewer students, you're going to have a much reduced pool of labor to choose from, so you're going to have higher wages. So there's major, major budgetary challenges ahead, especially if you look at it on a per-student basis. You know, I know charter schools are controversial, and that could be a small part of it, but that's not the major part of what's going on here. It's a major demographic tidal wave that we see coming and that we really need to be prepared for. How we're going to do that exactly, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Oh, no problem.
I think that Pam noted that the increases in the last 10 years have been under 2%, and I know our enrollment's down, but the class sizes in Concord are about equal to the major school districts throughout the state. So I think we've spent time trying to reduce the budget, but when you think that the state reimburses us per child about $4,500 approximately, but then they take that money and raise it by raising our property tax, it's a system that our local districts just can't beat, and I don't know the solution, but I do think that the school board has tried real hard to keep the budgets low, and I wish we could stop the rising property taxes.
So the specific question was around special education and transportation, two items over which we have no control, gas prices, insurance, vehicle insurance. Special ed is mandated by federal law, so if we're told that we have to provide services, we have no choice in that. This is incredibly difficult sometimes to explain in a way that people really understand. We also have medical insurance costs that skyrocket again and again, and then we depend on the state. So so much of our budget is out of our hands. I always compare it to developing a picture in a darkroom where you can't see, you have your hands in the bag, and you have to make decisions on what you think might happen. Having said that, I feel that we've spent hours trying to make a budget work, and that we have conflicting interests. We need to keep the tax rate low, but we want to have good test scores, we want to educate our children. I've used the old blueberry example before. We're not raising blueberries that we can put away, all the ones that didn't ripen. We have to accept every blueberry in the bucket and educate and care for those children, and that can be expensive.
One of my favorite quotes is, "Show me your budget, and I'll show you what you value." We need to focus on where the evidence makes most sense to make investments, and for us, that really should be our people, right? We know the evidence is clear. Low student-teacher ratios are a driving factor in students' success. I really hear what Clint is saying. I mean, the state adequacy formula for education has been found insufficient. It's been ruled by the courts as insufficient for over 30 years. I mean, I think taxes are going up either way, even without this huge project, and here's why. I think that education isn't necessarily always working in a traditional way for all kids, and I categorically reject the framing of students who receive special education services as somehow driving costs. I mean, at the end of the day, the research is clear. 40 years of inclusion, we know all kids benefit, right? So thank you.
Well, I think the first and foremost thing we have to get right, frankly, is the school's budget, the building budget, because if we ever spend on a new school building, taxes are definitely going to go up, and the cut's going to have to be way more drastic in the future if that happens. That said, obviously, the state, everyone knows that they don't fund public education the way they should, and so there's gaps there that have to be fixed. I think what, you know, if we do nothing, and, you know, as previous boards have said, there's really nothing you can do, the taxes are going to go up. But the reality, I think we need a little bit more transparent approach. You see this in other communities, that, you know, they have to go to the community to get a vote, is they go through a prioritization process and clearly communicate what has to happen, and then, you know, as they kind of go through that and talk about the programs that support the broadest group of students, then the community has an opportunity to provide some input on what remains and have some input on how much money they're willing to spend. And so I think that's where we need to get a spot where we're very clear about what we have to spend money and what we don't have to spend money on, and allow the community to provide input.
Thank you. In July, Governor Sununu signed a bill into law that bars transgender girls from playing on girls' sports teams starting in 5th grade. At least one school district in the state has since elected not to follow that law, citing a potential conflict with Title IX. If a transgender girl wished to play on a girls' sports team in Concord, what do you think the district should do? Barb, we're going to start with you on this one. one.
I think school officials should sit with the family and discuss all sides of the issue to get a good handle on the mental well-being of that child, as well as the potential ripple effect that participating or not would happen. I don't think that's an answer that I can just give a simple, a question that I can give a simple answer to. We're responsible for every child in the district, every girl, every form and manner of girl. So I believe each instance is individual and requires understanding, open-mindedness, and conversation. As a female athlete, I have several opinions, none of which I would share as a board member, because maybe my opinions would make someone else feel uncomfortable. That's incredibly unfair. Every person sitting in that audience should feel I have their back. So that's how I feel about that. We would have to have incredibly tender conversations to make sure inclusion wasn't excluding, and that we had a middle ground that we were comfortable with. And that's as specific as I'll get.
I do not think it is the job of the school board to be weighing in on individual children. Trans kids are kids, kid safety is number one, and kids deserve to feel supported in their communities.
I'm gonna echo a lot of what Sarah just said. I think ultimately, you know, the state largely kind of are reached here. This really is a very personal decision that really shouldn't be made by, you know, at the state level. But nonetheless, on the board, our job is to protect our children and to protect their well-being. That's all kids, regardless of what they believe, what their parents believe, who they are. And frankly, that's our jobs to protect them. You know, as far as how far the board should go in this, I think that we have to, you know, some serious conversations, and as well as some very patient conversations with the community, but also with that individual family if that were to come up. My position on this is very much, we need to support our kids and provide a welcoming environment for them.
In 2021, the board unanimously approved a policy to allow children to play sports consistent with their gender identity. That's the NHIA policy, and I still support that today. I think we offer extracurricular activities for academic reasons to allow kids to learn important values, and every kid should have that chance.
Let me answer that question about the Kierstarch decision, which I think was the school district you're referring to, which elected to not, I guess, I shouldn't say not follow, to have a different interpretation of the law. I think that the school district obviously must follow the law. I don't know if that interpretation of Title IX would pass muster with the courts. I think we would maybe get a legal opinion before doing that, because we don't want to put a litigation risk on the district. Having said that, I personally am inclined to think that children should play according to their gender identities, certainly at this level of sports. I think when you get into the elite levels of sports, you know, and maybe we're talking about a professional level, the governing body of each particular sport might have to weigh in. But at this level of the sports, I think it is important to support the gender identity of our students.
Being a principal for so many years, I look at all of my children, and I notice that statistics about transgender's youths and their mental health, and probably they're the largest segment of society that we have things like suicides and stuff. It's a very complex problem. And I wish that we would help these young kids a little more than we're doing. And I don't have a perfect answer for this question.
The district currently doesn't have a DEIJ director. Superintendent Murphy said that the job was too vast for one person. But at the same time, community leaders have said there's a disconnect between marginalized communities, and that the DEIJ role helped bridge this gap. Would you support hiring additional staff to conduct the district's diversity, equity, and inclusion work? And Sarah will start with you.
I would, particularly if that position focused on greater civic engagement with those students and community. I think that that would very much be an appropriate use of public dollars.
Yeah, I, look, I think, I think there's a lot of folks in our community who are ready to support in this area. And in my understanding, I've talked to a number of folks who have reached out, and they want to support, and they want to come into school district and provide opportunities for exposure, but also opportunities for more kind of integrated activities. And so, yeah, we should absolutely, if the community's in support of that role, great. I think the challenge sometimes is we think, oh, great, we hired this person, we're paying money for them, and they're going to have an immediate impact. And a lot of times, that impact on our student population needs to come from the ground level, needs to be organic. And we have these communities that want to integrate into school district and provide opportunities to our children and to meet them right where they're at. So, you know, we have an opportunity to create a little more, I would say, outreach with those groups and the leaders of those groups, and get them in our school district. And I think, you know, we'll get a greater impact that way. But yeah, if the school, if the community supports the director, then we should, we should, we should hire that.
You know, I do think it's important. I voted to put it in place and to keep it in place. But I do think if you look around the state, everybody needs to think about how we do these roles a little differently, because it was too much. And there are a lot of expectations that were probably too much for one person. So I think as a board, we've been thinking about, and the district has been thinking about, how do we define this role? You know, is it student-focused? Is it community-focused? You know, person was invited to be on 30 committees, and that could take all of your time. So we got to think about how we do that. But it all goes back to the most important value, which is that every kid should feel safe at school, should feel like they have the opportunity to grow and learn, and that school should be a welcoming place for them.
Yeah, I saw the story, and I think I watched some of the meeting about this. But it's hard for me to really assess whether that position was getting the value that the board had originally anticipated. It seems like they were better reallocate the person who was a quality person. So it's good they were able to keep him in a different role. I think, echoing a little bit of what Pam said, I think it's really more important to have a top-down policy that is going to filter through to all of the personnel, certainly the teachers, but really, really all of the staff, to implement. You know, if we could save the budget on one position that maybe wasn't very effective, because he was being run around a lot, and we could still get the same result through having an overarching policy, that would obviously be a win. So, you know, we're talking about the budget here. But obviously, any given position seems critical when you get into it. So that's the challenge.
I know, you know, I'm dealing with a number of years ago, but we had many people in our school system that helped minority groups and people like that fit into our school system. And I thought, from what I observed, that we did a fairly good job. And I think that's still the case in our schools.
One thing I feel really good about as a board member, specific to this issue, is the nine people in our superintendent's willingness to look at a position that was created, to see that it wasn't what we thought it was going to be, and to step back and give it time to make it better, rather than rushing someone into the position. I think it's definitely important for us to have a DEIJ coordinator. I also think it's definitely important that the job is set up in such a way that it will be effective. And if that means taking a year to put it together, in my mind, that's a school board working really hard to do the right thing.
Last year, the school board rejected a proposal to add a school resource officer to the middle school. What do you think is the appropriate role of police in school district buildings? And we'll start with Mr. Scroggins.
It's an unfortunate reality that that's the conversation we have to have nowadays, but it is. So, you know, I think children's security is vital and important. I do think that there's opportunities, you know, through the middle school, that we can, you know, have better security measures that, you know, kind of reduce the need for this. So, you know, I do, I do think insurance securities, you know, installed in the middle school is super important, would help with this. But, I mean, ultimately, the challenge is really going to come down to budgetary, and, you know, what the community's willing to support, and what they feel they're willing to spend money on. I think going through a better prioritization method, where we're clear with the community, here's what we have to spend money on, which is really academics and, you know, kind of core programs to support the broader students. And then we're able to have conversations around security, DEI, all the other things that are really important to help the community understand, you know, what the finance is going to be. And ultimately, if the community supports that, it's something we should spend money on.
I voted no against adding a resource officer to the middle school. I didn't think the position was very well-defined. I thought a social worker position, which we have added, was a better fit. You know, it's a difficult balance, because I think all parents, certainly I'm a parent of a child in the district, and I worry about what I see on the news and outside threats. And we've invested a lot of money in trying to improve the security of our buildings. We've been lucky here at the high school. We've gotten some great resource officers who have educational backgrounds, but they're pretty unique. And I, you know, I just, their role at the middle school would be far different, I think, than at the high school, and I wasn't comfortable. I'm with adding that.
Yeah, I would tend to be a no on the school resource officer. I was a public defender for a number of years. So I saw, you know, multiple police child encounters, because we did a lot of juvenile cases that didn't go well. I think the supposed selling point in the school resource officer is, well, they're not there to, you know, arrest the kids, they're there to just, you know, be a friendly face. But it seems like that is the role of our guidance counselors and our teachers. If it got to the point where we needed them for actual security, that would, that would obviously raise a huge alarm. But that doesn't, I haven't heard anything about that, you know, really being necessary. And police officers can be triggering for a lot of people. I mean, I've come to respect police officers, say, more than I did when I was, you know, first in my career. So I do have a lot of respect for the police officers. But I don't think just having them kind of walk around the halls and be, you know, officer-friendly for the kids is really that much value.
I kind of agree with Andy that we should do a little bit of analysis of exactly what our resource officer would accomplish. I mean, what's the problem? How does that resource officer improve that problem? And if we've got a definite yes, that there's some things that absolutely need to be addressed, then you say, well, the resource officer, would someone else do it? I don't think that we've done that yet, but maybe we have. I just haven't been available for that.
I'm not sure if anyone else sitting at the table has ever worked in a school with a resource officer. I have. I worked here at Concord High School, and Jason Wimpy was the SRO at the time. And he did not just walk around in his uniform saying hi to kids. He was busy from dawn to dusk, leading groups, interactions, coming into classes, giving guest lessons, on everything. Later on, I was in a, playing a flag football game at White's Park with some students from another local school. And he drove by, and he was going from one place to another, and he jumped out and, you know, joined in our game for a little while. Does it have to be a police officer? I suppose the short answer is no. When we cut the SRO this year, a lot of it was around needing more school nurses. So when I looked at the need for nurses and the need for an SRO, I think the medical needs of our students weighed heavy there. I look at the SRO a lot like I look like DEIJ or social workers. What is the question we want answered? What's the process to answer the question? And is an SRO the most meaningful way to do that? And that requires conversation.
I support the board's decision to have cut the SRO position, the school resource officer. I would love to see the evidence on efficacy of having someone in that role. I would be very interested in public opinion. I think school nurses are the heroes of our school. They are undervalued, and they do so much. And I do think a lot of what they see is adjacent to social work. And so I would definitely have to do the research before making an opinion. But I'm leaning to no on an SRO and investing that money elsewhere.
Thank you. Next year, we will mark five years since the start of the pandemic. State testing, which we know is an imperfect measure of academic performance, indicates Concord is recovering from the pandemic a little bit more slowly than the state as a whole. What more or differently should the district do to address academic performance? We're going to start with Clint.
Those are very good questions. And I think that trying to recover from that pandemic is going to be ongoing for a long time, because we had children miss so many opportunities. But I do think that we're starting to get back to where we need to be. And I think that the teachers are the main driver of adjusting to what the kids need. And I know in, when the kids first came back after the pandemic, we had children coming to our second grade that did not have kindergarten and did not have first grade. And being an elementary principal, I watched what kindergarten teachers do to train those children, how to be a student in the school. And when they came to our second grade without that training, we had chaos in the elementary schools. I think it's starting to deal, we're starting to deal with it now, and we've made a lot of recovery.
I had a legendary track coach when I was in high school who warned me not to obsess about the ability of the other runners. If I was spending all my time worrying about them, all I was going to do was be as good as them. If I wanted to be better than them, I needed to focus on myself and my own strengths and weaknesses. So as a board member, I would try to encourage us to look at our kids, the weaknesses in our community, where we see growth, where we see struggle, and simply look at us. Other towns matter not in this, except for people who want to compare. And I know we want Concord to shine, et cetera. But in terms of doing what we need to do to support our kids, we need to look at our kids and our teachers, and focus on what we're doing right and where we can improve.
So first, I think we need to acknowledge the impact of COVID, especially on civic engagement. I think we've got a lot of planned confirmation bias going on right now, where we made plans prior to the pandemic. And even though we've seen dramatic reductions in civic engagement post-COVID, we are pressing forward with those plans. And when we think about what standardized testing is, I mean, I worked in graduate school at South High in Worcester, Massachusetts, where a standardized test is required to graduate. So I'm well aware of the shortcomings of standardized tests, and the way they disproportionately impact already marginalized communities. I think that in order to fix academic performance, we need to invest where it matters, where the evidence is clear, low student teacher ratios, including having more teaching assistance in the classroom. We need to be patient, and we need to recognize Barb's point. I mean, we're supporting our kids, and that's what matters.
I think it's a good question. I have two kids that, you know, were heavily impacted by the pandemic. One thing that's very clear to me, our teachers in Concord by and large are incredible human beings who have been over backwards post-pandemic, both personally for the kids, but also as teachers. And they've genuinely impacted my kids as humans. And so I think that, you know, any path to improving the scores, it's going to be the teachers. And I know that that may feel like an easy soft answer, but really, there's a lot behind that. We need to prioritize our educators in everything we do, from our budget, from our conversations. We need to hear more from our teachers. We need to meet them where they're at, allow them to provide feedback to us as a board, so that we can hear what's in their way of educating our kids. They're highly trained, they're highly skilled and care deeply for our kids. And it becomes our job to protect them and to see what we can do as a board to ensure they're successful. And so if we get distracted by the next shiny object, and then we prioritize that in a budget, it puts our teachers at risk, which then scores are going to continue to suffer in the future.
I think like a lot of us here, you know, I had a young child during the first year of COVID. That's why I ran for the school board. I just saw what it was doing to him and his learning. I just saw what it was doing to him and his learning loss and isolation. You know, we have tried a bunch of different things, none of them perfect. We, a lot of it had to do with the inability to hire additional tutors and educational assistance. But, you know, in our classrooms, I think teachers are working every day to identify the gaps where students are, targeting them for outside interventions. Okay, you don't, you need help multiplying, you're still struggling with suffixes and prefixes and getting in them into smaller groups to work on those things with outside help. And I think that's what we have to keep doing, one student at a time. I think we have a bit of a bubble, you know, depending on what kids miss. The kids that were in kindergarten to third, fourth grade were probably the most behind now, and that bubble is going to continue. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I was very critical of the board's decision back in 2020 to not reopen the schools. You know, at the time, it was, I think, a little bit of overdrama about, oh, it's, the schools are going to spread the disease so badly, and that's our, that's the only priority here. And a lot of people were saying, well, this is going to be really bad for the students. They said, well, the students will be fine, that, you know, this is, stopping the spread is the most important thing. Well, now, four years later, all these studies are coming out that said, well, it wasn't, didn't really do much to stop the spread, and it did set the students back. It's like, thanks a lot, you guys just figured it out. It's like, a lot of people were saying that back then. And to Pam's credit, she probably doesn't remember this, I, her position at the time was the closest to what I had thought. I can't remember exactly what it was, but I, I actually remember sending her an email. She might find it in her box if she searched that, said, hey, I actually agreed with what you said at the time, at least more than, you know, what the other board members are saying. As far as, you know, how are we going to catch them up? I'm, I'm not an educator, I'm not going to pretend to be one. I don't have any genius ideas for that. I think a lot of this is going to be regression to the mean. I think the kids will naturally start to get closer and closer back to where they were. Somebody 50 years from now is going to look at this and say, hey, were the pandemic kids, are they, do they have worse jobs now than they would have? And they'll, you know, be doing this for, you know, the rest of my lifetime, but I think a lot of it's guesswork.
We're going to circle back to the middle school project with two final questions before we move to questions from the audience. So if you have anything that you'd like asked, please either raise your hand or come down and see Rachel.
Okay, this is a cost question. When the board sets a price for the middle school, we know that bonding to finance the project will add to taxpayers' annual bills. At the same time, the city talks about renovations to Memorial Field, a new police station, and other inevitable costs that come with managing a school district and a city. What do you say to residents who recognize that Concord needs a new school but are worried about being taxed out of their homes? Barb will start with you.
As a fellow citizen, I would say I share your concern. It freaks me out. I also always acknowledge that we have the city council and we have the school board, but the pot of money is the same. We each take our share. So half of that question is out of my control. This is where sometimes autonomy is tricky. It would be super helpful to answer this very question and to address the tax rate with more working together with the city. But we don't. We don't have to be approved by the city. They don't, we don't have to approve things they do. So you have two sort of like parallel play with little kids, right? Both doing our work. There's no simple answer to that question. It sucks. We need new fields, we need, this doesn't accredit Concord High School, the auditorium we're sitting in. We have a middle school that needs repair or replacement, we're hurting. And then that doesn't even count things like our outdated police station and all of the citywide things that come from the same pot. So, you know, quite honestly, your guess is as good as mine. And we just have to, again, communicate, have open conversations, leave our strong personal and political opinions out of the conversation to try to come to a solution that is least harmful.
It's a great question about how to balance priorities. The conditionists at Runlet are unacceptable. I have so many questions about deferred maintenance. And like so many families in our district, my family also experiences a high degree of economic insecurity. In our case, it's driven by a loved one with a health condition, and it requires a lot of caregiving. So if you want someone who feels every dollar of the consequences of board decisions, you should think about vote for me because it is a tough balancing act. And I recognize that the board serves the voters of this community. And I agree with Joe's point earlier about including the community in that prioritization. There's a lot of ways we can get better at soliciting public input in a transparent manner. Roundtables, meeting people where they physically are, accessible meetings, participatory sessions. There are so many strategies that we can use to navigate this challenge together.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't do something now, we're going to see the greatest inequity ever in the history of Concord in the near future. You know, we're facing a $152 million school bill that's going to be nearly double what most other communities in our state do. It's going to be the most expensive school bill in the history of New Hampshire. We have a lot of money we want to spend as a community, and this is what autonomy gets you, is everyone's running their own direction and not really asking the question of, am I a good steward of, of the citizens' money? I think, you know, there's sols for this. The short term is, yeah, certainly scary. And frankly, thinking about joining a fully autonomous board scares me because I have to represent a group of people who have to pay the bills at the end of the day. We need better, better planning. We've got to be honest about our long-range planning, what we can actually spend on, spend money on. We need better prioritization. Every new shiny object that pops up, you know, for the last 15 years, we've, we've been very excitedly running after it and spinning our edge going after it, and we can't. We can't pursue everything. And so we have to have some real conversations with the community. But we do need more interconnected tissue between the, the city as well as the school board so we can line our budgets for the next 10 years.
You know, as a school board member, I have a fiduciary responsibility to, to groups, taxpayers and students. And, you know, that's part of what drove my middle school decision because the East Side location is both cheaper and better for kids. I'm a homeowner, I see the tax rate increases too, and it definitely touches the family budget. I think, you know, we are at the beginning of a process. We still have, we have not yet done bids. I think we are going to continue to work to bring this project down. Unlike other school districts, we are doing this post-COVID and post-COVID bidding. You know, we have tried to save responsibly for this project, and that's going to, which was helped by our autonomy, and that's going to help us offset the upfront costs to taxpayers.
You know, if you look at the 10 largest cities in the state, Concord has the highest school local tax rate. And then if you look at the 10 largest districts, which is overlapping but it's slightly different, Concord spends the most per student of any of those 10 largest districts. So I think there may be great reasons for that. I don't, I can't say, oh, we're going to cut this, this, or this, or this, that would be irresponsible. Maybe there's perfectly good reasons, there's nothing that can be done. But I find that if, if I ask those kind of questions, that people frown upon even asking the question. I think those, that, that observation needs to be made. As far as the, as far as whether it's cheaper on the East Side, with all respect, there just hasn't been enough information released. I mean, there's, there's just numbers put out without any real itemization, how you get those numbers. If you go back to 2017, there was actually designs to, preliminary designs to rebuild at Runlet. There was nothing about broken ground at the time, and there was more detail then. Back then, it was a $75 million bill to rebuild at Runlet with, without the YMCA. And I know there's been inflation, but if you, if you track the inflation, it hasn't, construction costs haven't doubled in the last seven years, not even closed. So I do have questions. Can I say I have some great solution, or I can definitely get the, the budget for the building down? No, I just, I don't have enough knowledge to even say that. But I don't, I also don't think that people have enough knowledge to say the reverse and that the, the cost is justified. We, there's just too much unknown here.
Being a retired person in this community, I understand the dynamics of having a fixed income and the taxes keep going up. You know, and I could spend all day talking about the failure of the state to help out communities, but what good would that do? I think that the school board has been very careful about trying to keep the budget low and will continue to do that. And I don't know how we're going to get the cost of this project down, but I think we put all our minds together, we can figure out something. So that's what I hope we can do.
As you all know, the community remains deeply divided over this project, and many have said that the board's location decision has shaken their trust in the school board. This is a bit of a split question. For the current board members, is there anything you would have done differently in the last three years on the board to better maintain that trust? And to the challengers, what specific things do you think the board should do going forward to repair it? We'll start with Mr. Winters.
Well, I, I think, and everybody uses the word transparency. I mean, nobody's going to say, oh, we're not going to be transparent. And I'm not saying the school board in particular has, has been hiding anything, but I, but I respectfully think that the board has not asked really detailed questions about, about these construction costs. I mean, if you go back to the costs that were presented in, just before the 2023 meeting where the site location was decided, first of all, this, this site comparison presented by the architects was, I think, given a week before the meeting, and it, it was just one page, and it, it's just, it was complete summary form, it had no real details. I mean, I would think if you're going to have this kind of project, you would want to know, okay, it's going to be this type of flooring, here's the options for this kind of roof. I mean, I think you would have a, you know, a 50-page document going line by line. So I think it's not so much that the board's not being transparent, but my criticism of the board here is I think they need to, to push for more details from the people they supervise before making a, a decision.
Mr. Cogswell.
I just think the whole project is complex, and I think it, as, as Andy said, we need to get more detail and have the opportunity to look what's going to be in our school. When we built our three schools, we were able to do the building of the three schools without an increase in the tax rate. And that wasn't that long ago, but it also was a time in 2008 and '09 when the economy was really struggling. So we got good deals on interest rate and construction. But I just, we've got to build a school and we've got to make it affordable. And I'm not sure how to do that, but we'll work on it.
We're going to get to some reader questions, and we're going to...
We, we're, we're not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, who do we start with?
We started with Mr. Winters.
Yeah, okay. So would you re-ask the question that goes for the existing school board members, please?
Absolutely. Is there anything you would have done differently in your last three years, your, your last full term on the board to better maintain that trust?
Around the middle school decision and such? Or just in general?
Trust between constituents of the school board and the school board.
Right. I think since I've been on the board, so the last 12 years, a beef for me has often been the autonomy. I've often felt that small social groups and groups of people on the board that hang out together or share political beliefs, people that live in the same neighborhoods, we've often had very, very middle school cafeteria-esque school boards. And as someone that didn't really have a table in the middle school cafeteria, I sat here and there, always I'm trying to think about and voice the opinions and thoughts of those that might not be in on the conversation. Specifically different on my part, I have a big mouth and I ask questions and I give opinions in meetings. Doesn't always go over well, doesn't always help my ability to function well on the board. So I think maybe in terms of, you know, it's been such a contentious, difficult project, I think we've all, in some ways, done the best we can. I think that it's important to listen to people when they come to meetings and then at least try to do what they're asking us to do and not just appear to be ignoring them.
Specific things I think the board can do to fix trust include operating at a humane pace, where there is a transparent process, where folks can make their voices heard. I think post-COVID, we have to acknowledge that civic engagement is dipped, and we have to address it accordingly through a variety of civic engagement strategies. I think answering questions in a timely way, like the traffic study. I think recruiting a more diverse board should be a priority, and I think this takes time.
I think it's a, it's a great question. One thing that I've been super impressed with as I've, you know, met a lot of new folks recently as part of this campaign, is there are a lot of smart people in this city, and they're very engaged. And where my knowledge ends, there's always someone that's willing to reach out and help. And so we need to find better ways to actually just frankly, listen to those people. I don't, I don't think it was, per se, challenging due to the school board process. The community was already speaking up. We just, first of all, let's just listen to them. But I think there's some inequity to how some of these meetings were held. You know, scheduled at 5:30 PM on a particular day is challenging for parents, and so it made hard for parents to attend. So we need to find ways to go out into the community when we need to gather feedback. And whether that's smaller pre-meetings where you get to gather that feedback and you go up to the heights and, you know, maybe you visit a church service, you, you attend sport events, and afterwards you allow for, you know, breaks. There's, there's a dozen different ways that I've seen other communities handle the feedback. And then the other, the other thing is small committee groups that we often put together, but we don't really give them a really clear charge, and they just sit and talk, and talk, and talk, and really need to have feedback with recommended action from those groups that we actually have to take serious.
In a three-year process, I'm sure there are things we could have done better. Certainly have tried to reach out and talk to people after games, and we set up a table at the farmer's market on Saturday mornings. But it's also difficult because this is an ongoing public process. So you have this push-pull where people want all the answers at once, but we haven't gotten to that part of the equation yet. So the bids on floors will come after the next portion of the thing. There, you know, there are estimates on those, but we, they are not public documents because you don't want people to know what you're estimating for flooring because they might bid higher. But the, you know, that work is done. You know, the compare, cost comparison, you had to balance how much you were going to spend on this comparison, but you could get a pretty good sense of what cost more in that. So it's a process, and, you know, it was a hard decision.
Thanks. Now we're going to move on to reader questions, and we don't have time to do a whole lot, so we're going to do, we might only have time to do one or two. So we're going to do a little bit of consolidation. So if your question doesn't sound like how you wrote it, that's why. But the first question I'm going to read here. There's been a lot of discussion around the middle school project. While important, I don't believe an election should be decided on a single issue. Can you each name your top priority other than the middle school? And we're going to start with Sarah.
Absolutely. My top priority other than the middle school is using evidence-based strategies to make our policies and decisions.
Yeah, top priority aside from middle school is to figure out how to get our budget in a place where the community tax base can catch up.
The middle school is actually not my top priority, although it's what we spend most of our time on. It's, you know, investing more in our classrooms and our teachers and our curriculum and working on helping kid, meet kids where they are, all kids.
Yeah, a little bit of a repeat from before, but my top priority is to get the district to be very serious about the, the future demographics that are coming. I think that, you know, a lot of it's very present focus, which of course is natural, but we have to look at this kind of like a, like a business would. We have to project out 10, 20 years, and there's going to be a massive, massive demographic tidal wave that's coming. And, you know, how is the district going to prepare for that? I think a lot of really smart institutions, private and public, are looking at, you know, the graying population, the, the, the reduction in the labor pool, the fewer students that we're going to be seeing. So how are we going to plan for a much different future? I'd like the district to, to look into that more. I don't have some great solutions for it, but I, I think technology has got to be a big part of it.
Being a community member for a long time, the Concord School District and the Concord School Board has always been very popular. Of late, there's been a lot of... School Board has always been very popular. Of late, there's been a lot of discussion, division, and I'll be very happy when eventually the Runlet School is built, and then we can get back to doing business as usual.
My biggest priority is kids. That's the whole reason this school district exists, to educate children. So any decision that directly affects the education of children is a top priority to me. So that would be curriculum, that would be instruction, that would be the safety and accessibility of our buildings, that would be the mental health and well-being of our teachers, and how we take care of all of the people involved in educating our kids. So that's a lot bigger than one building in a community. One of the things I always notice with when individuals run on a one-agenda ticket, I'm running for school board because of this, it's always a blast to watch them in their first year on the board realize that their one agenda is this big in the list of things we have to do as a school board. So for me, the connection for me is always, how will this directly affect kids? And if there's a decision that's close to kids and a decision that's more removed from kids, I go with the issue that directly affects students.
This is a fun question for me. I get the pleasure of covering both of your meetings. How often do you think the school board and the city council should meet together? We'll start with Ms. Walsh.
Right now, we meet, we have scheduled to meet twice a year, which is new. It had sort of died out. And the mayor and I have revived the meetings, and I think that's a good balance, that mayor and I do have coffee once a month and just catch up on things and exchange information on what's going on and everything.
I don't have a fixed notion on that, to be honest. I mean, you can have a ton of meetings to get nothing done, or you can have one great meeting that really puts everyone on the same page, you know, for a year, and saves a lot of time. But what I do think is important, that the public be aware of what's going on, and that the meetings generally, now, obviously, if it's just sort of a casual, where we're catching each other up on stuff that's been going on, I'm not, you know, saying anything about that. But in general, if there's collaboration that's going to be material to a decision, either for the city council or the school board, I think the public should have a knowledge of what's being discussed, and if it's going to be relevant to those decisions.
When I was on the school board, before, we met as needed, which when certain things would come up, we'd meet. But we used to meet at least every two or three months, and I think that was adequate.
I would agree a bit. Rather than have a scheduled meeting that may or may not be productive, I think when we're making big decisions, that the school board and the city council should meet and discuss how the decision impacts each board, and how the decision would impact the community tax-wise and logistically. So again, I think it should be regular and consistent, and it should become a conscious piece of the process, especially when we're talking about projects that affect both the city council and the school board.
I fully support more meetings between these city council and the school board, public meetings, in which we see as voters how folks are working to collaborate across projects, particularly with Memorial Field, the renovation, it's estimated to cost anywhere from 10 to 20 million. Like, seeing more collaboration between these two bodies would benefit the taxpayers.
Yes, there should be more meetings. I think first and foremost, the purpose is important of meetings. Andrew hinted on this, but, you know, in my workplace, we have a very narrow set of rules around what can and be a meeting, what can't be a meeting. So we have to be careful to ensure we're not wasting time. But that being said, big decisions should definitely, there needs to be more connected tissue. Budget season, there has to be more meetings between the boards. Minimum quarterly, I would think, should be sufficient. I think there's maybe smaller subgroups that could get together, you know, in between those quarterly meetings. But, you know, what's kind of put us in this tough situation where we have to ask a tough bunch of questions is everyone wants to spend all the money, right? And so when we have those conversations around the money, we really have to have long-range planning. And when both the city and school board are doing long-range planning, that really needs to be together along the budget lines.
Thank you. And we have one more question from the audience. For the challengers looking for seats on the board, how many school board meetings have you attended in the last year? And are there any issues in particular that you've spoken out about at these meetings or written to the board about? Clint, we'll start with you. Sarah, we'll go to you, because we'll skip bar.
I've been to all of them.
You have not.
I've been to a lot of them.
I have been to school board meetings in person. I've been to the public Q and A at Millbrook, and I really do think that listening online is important. The issue that really sparked my interest in running was actually a clip that I saw on a former school board's page that was put up publicly. And while I was watching, I realized that there was something with the blueprint that really needed to be addressed. So I got together with a bunch of folks who were interested in the same issue. It was the physical segregation of students with disabilities, which is not how we do it anymore. I understand that it was made with good intent. Folks wanted an easy evacuation policy, but that, you shouldn't group disabled kids together in a single wing when we know the research is clear that they should be with their peers, right? And that both their peers and the disabled children benefit from shared spaces and time together. So that's what brought me in. I was very pleased that the superintendent was receptive, and I enjoyed working on the issue, and they fixed the blueprint, which I'm sure you all will be glad to hear.
I haven't been to a meeting this year. And, look, here, part of the struggle of being a parent is the timing of all the meetings aren't always convenient. But I'll be frank, I somewhat fell asleep at the wheel about the school board because I assumed good decisions were going to be made. And as, you know, what motivated me to run was when the decision was made to not listen to the public on the middle school. I had been attending meetings prior to that, and felt the direction was heading towards Runlet, and, you know, that was where we headed with a much more reasonable school build. And then, once that decision didn't happen, you know, that's why I'm sitting here today. But I haven't attended a meeting this year. I think that we need to find ways to allow for more parents to attend who can't always attend at 5:30 PM on one specific day.
Right. I don't deny, I think if you read some of the statements I put out when I first announced that I was going to run, that the middle school issue was the catalyst for me. And I certainly can understand it's a valid point, question, or criticism that, oh, this is a one-issue thing. I think, at some point, I felt duty-bound to do it because I was discussing with people, well, who's going to run? Obviously, there's huge discontent here with this decision, and just a couple people sort of suggested I might, and I started looking into it. I am on the zoning board, which makes, you know, so that's a meeting obligation. I would resign from that board if I was elected. I did talk to my wife and kind of talked about how we would schedule this to make sure I could make meeting times. Because I did do quite some discussion with various people who had the information to see exactly what the commitment is in terms of, obviously, there's the full board meeting, then there's the committee meetings. But in terms of my research in doing this, and I've done a lot of research, I've watched a lot of meetings, and honestly, I usually watch them at double speed.
If only we could live them. Thank you all, and thank you all to the audience for submitting questions. We're going to have to move on to closing statements now. Candidates, you'll have two minutes each, and Clint will start with you, and then go down the line.
Thank you all. I've been a, I'm not from Concord, but I've been a resident since about 1980. I've raised my family here. I've worked in the Concord School system. I've been on the Concord School Board, and I love this community. And the reason I'm running for this office is I thought that I could be a help because of my background, but also for my feelings about how I really love the children here in Concord. It's been really good for my kids, my grandkid. And I've been on two hearings now with this group here. And I can say that there's a few people that think that they're going to change a lot, but if they do get onto the board, they're going to find how hardworking the board is, and how they work as a team, and it's a wonderful organization, and they represent our community well. So what I want to say is that I'd vote for any one of them.
How I feel about these types of events is how I feel about standardized tests. We're all only as good as we are tonight. I haven't had a great day, so. I feel the same way as Clint in the sense that what I love most about this is that there are six people for three seats. I've been in several elections where there were the same number of people as seats, which isn't an election at all. The bottom line here for me, what I bring to the board is a lifetime of living here, well, 10 years out. But I was a student in the district. I was a teacher for 20 years in the district. I raised my kids in the district. I've been on the board. So I see things from every possible angle, which I think can be helpful in decisions. My strongest feeling, however, isn't the opinions of these people on all the questions we were asked. It really means nothing. What makes a board work is having a diverse group of people who bring professional experience, lived experience, perspective, empathy, communication into a conversation. And some of the best boards I've been on have been nine people that agree upon little, but can sit together and make decisions. So you need to choose, and tell your friends to choose, the three of us that you think can sit at a table and work with each other, and listen to you, and listen to one another, and get angry sometimes, and bite your tongue sometimes, and come to decisions that are best for kids. So you decide, who do you feel good about? Which one of us, or which three of us, make you feel good about next year's school board? And choose those people.
So again, it's Sarah Sadowski, and I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who's reached out in support, and your confidence means so much to me. I appreciate all of those, many of you are in the room tonight, who have given your time and expertise to help me understand these issues from all sorts of different sides. Thanks to the Monitor for hosting, and thanks to my family, who will be watching tomorrow. I'm running because I have the time and the experience and the commitment, the will to listen to the voters of this community. My husband and I have four kids in three schools in the district. We have, our youngest is a third grader at Brooklyn Ground. Our oldest is a sophomore at Concord High. We live across the street from the proposed site. It's important that the voters know that. So we've been super tuned in to the middle school conversation for years now, and I feel I have a lot to offer. And here's how. I know this isn't just a one-issue race, and I have a lot of experience with budgets. At this point in my career, I've managed budgets, I've managed staff, I've grown coalitions. I understand how important it is to follow strong internal fiscal policies, like securing competitive bids. It's crucial for public trust. I have a significant amount of project and management experience. I've raised over $2 million for New Hampshire nonprofits. I've brought over $330,000 into this district through the preschool development grant. So I know what it takes on the revenue side of the equation. There are four things you need to know about me. I value process and authentic community engagement. I'm pro-public education. I'm all about evidence-based policies when we make decisions. And fourth, and maybe most important, my family is super financially insecure. So, you know, these are issues, you can't out-hustle medical bills right now. You can't out-hustle some of this stuff. And I live that reality every day. I've been fortunate that I have over a decade of experience volunteering in the classrooms, helping with school activities, and chaperoning field trips. Shout out to the fifth grade field trip to Boston next week. I'm very excited. The student experience really matters to me. I'm humbled by the way the adults in this community, like you, go the extra mile for our kids. I really, truly appreciate the folks who give their time and service to this board, and I want to be a part of paying it forward. Thanks so much.
I've met a lot of new folks over the last few weeks. I've learned three things about Concord. First of all, Concord citizens just want good stewards of the tax money. Second of all, they want good, well-funded, educated schools. I haven't met a single person that's said that they didn't want that. And third, we have a lot of very smart, intelligent people in our community who are really engaged and willing to help out, and they do it without being asked. I ran mainly because a large, folks in the community felt that there was a lack of trust between the board and the community. And what I'm going to bring to the board is a community-centric approach, more humility. I don't understand, or I don't know what I don't know. And so when I don't know what I don't know, I'll be able to work with the community, because there's a lot of people in this community who are ready and willing to help out, and they're free and willing, give their time, they do the research, they come in and want the board to make good decisions so we can have good education, good schools. I'd bring a fresh voice to the board. But I'm really concerned about the great inequity that's ahead of us if we don't get the budget for the new school building right. And while there's a, you know, conversation of it being a one-topic issue, and it's one and done, unfortunately, it's going to box in the community for the next 30 to 50 years if we don't get it right. And so we have to get that right. Because, you know, in the future, there's going to be tougher conversations for other people who are running for the board about, you know, how they're going to solve an actual financial crisis in the community. So we just need to get that budget right. But ultimately, aside from that, I believe in strong education. I bring in strong schools. I bring in strong programs. But to do that, we need a smart budget. We need a budget that's long-term, it's planning long-term for the changing demographic in our community. I have two daughters in our school district, they're third-generation Concord residents, and I want to ensure that they can have a fourth generation. And so that's going to really come largely by ensuring our school building budget is right, and we figure out how to have a long-term budget that allows our taxpayers to catch up.
Hi. First, thank you to the Monitor for hosting this, to the audience for coming and for watching at home, and to my fellow candidates. I first ran for the board four years ago because of COVID, and because I wanted kids back in school. And that's because, I believe, public education is the most important investment that we make as a nation, as a community. Public schools are the only place that have the legal and moral obligation to give every kid the best shot possible to succeed, and to provide them all of the resources and support that they need to do that. I think that's important, and it's valuable, and it makes our society and our communities better. As a board member, I have two constituencies, taxpayers and students, and I work every day to balance those sometimes competing demands, because sometimes what you need to do for students is going to cost taxpayers, and you got to try and find that balance. I'm proud of a lot of the things that we've done on the board in the past several years, returning to phonics in the younger grades, a new math curriculum, expanding foreign language at the middle school, increasing the safety and security in our buildings, although I wish that wasn't something that we had to spend so much time on. I think we have continuing challenges. We've talked about the COVID kids and our obligation to them. I think we have to continue to look at the regional technical center, which we didn't talk about tonight, but which is a huge asset for our community, and we need to make sure it keeps up with changing career demands, and address some of the areas of rising costs creatively while still meeting our obligation to kids. Because I agree with Sarah that these investments are important. They often pay off later, but we need to make them now. So thank you.
Again, my name is Andrew Winters. I've lived in or basically near Concord for most of the past 25 years. I first came here in 1999. I'm a lawyer. I have my own small law practice that I've grown with my partner. I've also been on, like I said, on the Concord Zoning Board for over 10 years, and that's given me a lot of valuable experience in solving community problems. My wife, Sarah, and I have two daughters who attend the Concord Public Schools, one at Abbott Downing, she's in third grade, and the other at Runlet, she's in seventh grade. And we've been extremely happy with the Concord Public Schools. However, frankly, having kids in the public schools, I don't think that's a great reason to support me as a candidate. In preparing for this forum, I went back and watched several of the ones in the past, and I noticed a trend, which is that, you know, the candidates tend to be, not universally, but very often are either retired, or former educators, or maybe even educators in another district, or parents, obviously, with children in the district who are sort of tuned into what's going on in the district. And while all of that's obviously extremely And while that's obviously extremely important, does give a valuable perspective, the school board represents the entire community, that community being duty-bound to provide quality education to the public. So we represent not just families with students, although obviously they're a main constituency, but we also represent people like the 85-year-old woman who lives in a mobile home off of Manchester Street, and she just lost her husband, and now she has one social security check instead of two, and she's not sure if she can pay the property taxes. And you will never find her in a meeting like this, and she might not even vote for school board, because maybe she never even had kids, and she probably figures it doesn't matter to her. I'm here for the superstar athlete in the school, but also for the severely disabled child who can't use the bathroom by himself and he needs a one-on-one aide, but unfortunately, because of statewide staffing shortages, it's only a one-on-two. The school board, as we've discussed, has unchecked tax and spending authority, which is unique to Concord, and that gives us a heightened duty to really consider our entire constituency and not just fall prey to the very easy path of sort of ultimately just representing certain special interests. And that, frankly, anyone can fall to that. It's an extreme position of power that I think we all should hold with great respect, and I do, and I think I bring a valuable perspective to the board. Thank you.
Thank you again to all of the candidates for joining us tonight. Thank you to everyone in the audience and tuning in remotely for your time and your attention. Thank you to the students of Concord High School for helping us get sound and everything working tonight, and thank you to Concord TV again for supporting this event. Polls will be open in Concord on November 5th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Polling locations and sample ballots can be found on the city's website. If you have any feedback on tonight's forum, on our reporting, or have follow-up questions, please reach out to us at news@concordmonitor.com. We're going to take a short break, and when we return, our Reader Advisory Board will lead a conversation with reporters about our ongoing series on the middle school project. We understand it's getting late, but we would be very happy if you stayed to join us for the conversation. Sorry, one thing really quickly. The email for feedback is news@concordmonitor.com. Thank you for your emails in advance. Thank you, I said Concord, didn't I? Thank you all. Good night.